Well, we call a meeting to order in any case. On the zoning board of, are there any formas?
Yes, there is. There's one for 208 Center Ave. You should have all have received a copy of the Form A in your packet. It is that parcel of land that was before you a couple of meetings ago for an all residential use. It's the old house that they're going to restore and then they wanted to build a single family home next to it. And this is to create the lot for the single family home.
Liz, were we assured that there's enough frontage for them to do that?
They received relief from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, because I was looking at the plan and I was like hmm.
They were sure, I want to not, not exactly 20 feet. It was under 20 feet.
Yeah.
But they have gotten relief from the zoning board of appeals.
Okay, it's good to know.
And I have a letter from Attorney Riley who couldn't be here tonight. It says, Dear members of the planning board, I will not be able to attend your meeting on April 5th, during which you will be asked to sign off on a Form A plan submitted for the above property, which is 208 Center Ave. I wanted to provide you with some additional background information about the purpose of the plan. If you recall, the planning board previously voted on January 4th to issue a special permit to allow 100% residential use on this parcel, which is situated in the Todd Zoning District. Pursuant to this special permit, a single family house will be constructed on the vacant lot and show on the submitted plan. The Todd District requires each lot to have at least 50 feet of frontage and at least 10,000 square feet of lot area. Both lots on this plan comply with and exceed those requirements. The zoning board has also voted to issue the required side yard setbacks to allow the construction of a single family house to proceed. The intent of this submitted plan is to create a plan recording at the registry of deeds, which delineates the boundaries of the two lots and straightens the front line, which separates the Whaling's existing house lot and the new vacant lot. After the board has signed this Form A plan, my office will record the plan. The registry of deeds and the Whaling's will then be able to sell their property.
We got the plans in party. Any comments?
No.
Don't make a motion.
Motion.
Rick, this is on the, the plan on 123 that we've had previously for Senator Rabinow.
I have no objection.
Someone want to second the motion?
Jeff did.
Oh, okay. I didn't miss that. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Rick?
Aye.
So move. Anything on the detention basin at 12, Donald Sullivan Way?
I actually do have an update. I received several emails today. They, last we heard, we weren't sure what their plan was. They were leaning towards restoring the basin and that has been confirmed. So they plan on starting work this week, actually, to restore the basin to the subdivision approval. And they'll remove the fill that was brought in. So that's about as up to date, that hopefully, you know, within the next couple of weeks, that will be all corrected and the stormwater management system will be in compliance.
And the discussion, discussed the lease remaining funds and zoning board review consulting.
We have $14,000 left in that account. I'm not sure that we need to turn them back over now. When that request was initially made, it's because we were looking at a shortfall at the town meeting and they were sort of looking for money. But with the addition of the $1.6 million from, that we just got, I don't know that we're going to need that. We could probably hold on to that $14,000 in case the board needs it moving forward with other, for other zoning review.
And on the zoning, on the new articles and everything else, they authorized us to go ahead with the advertising and hope to bring it up to town.
So everything that you guys have for next Tuesday night, I mean, next Monday night, has been advertised. And you're ready to move forward on Monday night. What hasn't been advertised and just came up with the attorney general's decision was the consistency between the Cannabis Control Commission, promulgated regulations for delivery of marijuana. And our bylaw really doesn't speak to their new regulations because they didn't exist at the time. So we've asked town council to sort of make a recommendation on how to fix that. And their suggestion is, we do have time to still advertise, to hear this at the May meeting. My question to you via town council is, do we want to allow delivery in the town of Abington or not? I talked to the town manager early today. He's an advocate for delivery. But we would need to have some regulations in our bylaw that spoke to the different types of delivery and if there were fees and permits and all that stuff. It will have nothing to do with the marijuana licenses.
What's the opinion of the board members?
I think delivery will lessen the traffic going in and out of there. So I mean, that's a good thing.
It would be delivery from other sources to other towns and other places that are not allowed.
Well, I mean, they're going to be bringing it in town from other delivery places regardless. This just allows another commercial operation in Abington to, where we get the tax money and the tax revenue. So.
Well, that's a good thing. If we're going to do this, might as well get that.
So the, the only other question that came to my mind when I, this was a very brief discussion I had with town council, was where the delivery can be located. And my immediate concern was not to have it in residential districts. Not that I think they're going to have, you know, a garage full of marijuana that they're going to leave at 12 o'clock at night to go make an emergency delivery. That, that's not what I was envisioning. But maybe just to leave it in the marijuana overlay district to keep things simple for everybody. If you guys are comfortable with that, and then we, if there's an issue in a year or two, we can always revisit it.
Well, here's a question, Liz. Supposing they wanted to lease space in like that Big Cell Shore Terminal building? You know, I mean, because that's a big building and there's probably space in there. And that would probably make sense, you know, like, because like Amazon is leasing former distribution facilities and stuff like that. I'm just throwing this out.
Right. Well, that's in the marijuana overlay district. So I think that would be okay. I think what we're trying to stay away from is having somebody deliver it next door to Rick Collins.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't be in favor of that.
He doesn't care. Or Jeff Rango. We don't, or Wayne Smith. You know what I mean? Those are heavily residential neighborhoods. So.
So here's the question I have. This, if you have, if they're operating a delivery business, they don't necessarily keep the supply on the premises?
They wouldn't necessarily, but they, how many vehicles would they need? I guess that's the concern. This came up before with numbers of vehicles stored on residential lots for business purposes, not for you, your spouse and your three kids, right?
Yeah. I mean, if I have, you know, if I had a van in my lot, my yard that I was using to do deliveries, I don't think that qualifies as a commercial use, correct?
No, but say you had three or four vehicles and you had drivers coming every day. I guess that's what we're trying to avoid.
I mean hypothetically, if they wanted to use one of the used car lots and turn that into a, you know, a fleet's office, would that be something terrible if it was on Route 123 or south of Route 18? You know, there wasn't.
I mean, I don't think so, but I, I think we're trying to do this quickly to be in compliance with the Cannabis Control Commission.
Yeah.
So if we make it the marijuana overlay district, we can do this quickly. If we're going to start picking and choosing, because if you remember, and this is apples and oranges to a large extent, but when the marijuana overlay district was suggested to be in that 123 corridor area, the neighbors were very upset about that. So I guess.
My other question is right now.
It's already in the marijuana overlay district. It's in the marijuana overlay district.
My, my only other question, I'm sorry for belaboring this, is I can't remember if it's our bylaw or the state guideline that says you can only have retail operations within 1,000 feet of each other. And.
The licenses are different.
Okay.
The licenses are not counting toward the retail licenses. We have five retail licenses and they don't need to be used for delivery licenses.
Perfect.
People who get a license from the Cannabis Control Commission could get an endorsement on top of their license to do delivery. So they don't have to get another separate license for delivery.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for Stormwater Management revolving fund.
So I spoke with John Stone and his estimate is it's $1,000 a year to maintain the basin. So over a 10-year period, it would be a $10,000 deposit into a revolving fund to maintain the stormwater management. At this point, we're not going to make enough on interest. And we really can't remove the money and invest it because then it's not in a revolving fund to be used for stormwater management maintenance. That was from the treasurer, that we really can't move it and put it into like a high interest account. Because it would be difficult for us to get it out if we needed to go clean a store, to clean a basin.
It's something that would need to be funded every year somehow. It would have to be income loss somehow to, to maintain that. We don't have any income.
No.
The problem with it is we need to get it from the developer, what he thinks is the project or what, as he develops the project, so that it would be there later on. So it's not one of those, and we can do it.
So do you guys want to?
towns that are doing this? Is there anyone else that has this?
I don't. I can look into that for the next meeting.
That'd be worthwhile to do.
It's okay if we could bump this to the next meeting, Liz?
Sure. I have a placeholder and town meeting for it in the, in the warrant. But if, if we can discuss it, I'll put it on the agenda for next Monday and you guys can make a decision whether we move forward with that warrant article or not.
Sounds good.
Being 615, a public hearing, Phil will commit 652 Adams.
Okay, I'm gonna, mic's unmuted. All right. All right. So Mike, you're unmuted, right?
Yes.
All right. And I'm unmuting Sean Hardy. Okay, Sean Hardy's unmuted.
You're working on 652. Sean, Sean and I worked on 6.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's Mr. Connie, sorry.
It's all right.
I'm, I'm, I'm muting you now, my friend.
All right.
Okay. I'm unmuting you now, my friend.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so there's been a slight development since the application I filed. I spoke to Liz the other day. And the paperwork that I filed, I was unaware, it was, it was copies of something that belonged to somebody else. So I had to withdraw that. And I understand that my, my application is not going to be an application for fill. It's an application for soil removal. I had, you know, several hundred yards during the course of this muddy situation between three neighbors. I had a lot of fill removed and I believe I'm supposed to apply for the permit through the Board of Selectmen with the planning review being the reviewing authority. So I'm just here to ask the board if they can kind of walk me through the process and tell me what they need.
I'm just gonna pop in, Mr. Connie, I'm gonna pop in real quick.
So that I can provide that and.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna pop in, Mr. Connie, I'm gonna pop in real quick.
Go ahead.
Sorry, we have a time delay.
I'm, I'm not hearing you, Liz.
Okay. Sorry, we have a time delay.
All right.
The, the planning board is the permit granting authority for the fill. The selectmen used to be, and then they passed it off to the, the planning board is the permit granting authority for the fill.
Okay, well, it wasn't fill.
Used to be, and then they passed it off.
Right. I, I'm under the impression that's bringing fill in, not taking fill out.
Or removal.
It's, it's.
Or removal.
Okay, all right. Lucky you guys, you know. So yeah, just please, whatever I have to do for documentation, I'm asking advice and, and please to give me time to get that and continue this at least till next month, if not the month after.
Do we have a motion for that? Or do you want, do you want two months? Do we want one?
Well, well, sir, sir, I, I know that in the last meeting that, that you and Mr. Rangel had spoken about coming out and I know there was some, some issues with COVID. So that wasn't able to happen. I would, I would love for you guys to please come out and I can walk you through as well as, you know, I can, I can provide you the documentation that you need. It'll kind of give you some insight into the whole triumvirate of, of, of misdeeds, if you will, between the three neighbors that's happened here.
We want to do that, board members, or how do we want to work?
I'm, I'm still willing to go out there, Wayne, if you, if you are.
We want one month or two.
What, what's the filing deadline, Liz?
It's Friday for May.
This Friday for May. So I, I would ask two months, please.
Okay.
All right. So we'll, we can have a motion to continue the hearing to June 7th.
Motion. Continue the hearing until June 7th.
Motion made. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor say aye.
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 So move.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Discussion of the housing choice law and proposed zoning disagree.
Um, so Attorney Riley, I believe I forwarded this to you guys before. Attorney Riley had submitted at the last meeting, a proposal for a zoning district that fit under the housing choice. And at the board's request, I sent that to town council to get their feedback and they have replied that DHCD has preliminary guidelines, which states that municipalities will still be eligible for grants while they work with the MBTA on the guidelines. Since the guidelines have not been established, we recommend Abington wait until the guidelines are out so that any rezoning will comply with DHCD.
Is there an advantage in rezoning that to say an R20, which would make that more available if and when the time comes?
Well, they're, they're going to have specific, like specific zoning laws that they want towns to adopt in order to still be eligible for affordable housing money. But they haven't, they haven't given us those by guidelines.
So in other words, would not make any difference on how the zoning was presently. If it was R20, it would allow for apartments or something like that, if that's, which is what they're looking for.
Well, I think in, back in 2003, when we did all those zoning changes and we created the transit oriented district, they're looking for something similar to that. Something that, because we're close to the train station, so we're on their list. So they, but they need to give us the guidelines and the regulations. Otherwise, we're just kind of fumbling in the dark, adopting stuff we hope they want.
Just want to add that we wanted to talk about this at Citizens Planner Training Collaborative, which you guys know I'm involved with. And we decided we wouldn't discuss this or have this as a topic until the state, you know, issues their guidelines for this. So my personal opinion is we probably ought to wait for the state to issue their guidelines before we do anything with this.
That makes sense.
So we'll put this off till next year?
Please.
Well, we'll put this off till next year, till we hopefully have some guidance from the state?
Yeah, I guess, I guess the only problem that I have with it is it means pushing it off to town meeting for next year. And that's, I was just trying to do something that would speed that up.
Yeah, I, I hear you, Mr. Chair. I'm just saying that, you know, until we get guidelines from the state on this, it's probably better to put it off.
Okay. I have no problem with that. Any other comments? Modification Eagle Estates?
Okay, let me unmute. Where did they go? Oh, Mr. Timmons, Mr. Rourke, it looks like is with him, maybe? Okay, Mr. Timmons, can you hear us?
Yes, thank you.
And David Johnson is here. Is there anybody else that was going to be attending?
It's David Johnson.
Yeah, anybody else from, from you guys?
No, thank you. So shall I summarize the question before you? It's contained in the letter that I submitted that I presume everyone's had an opportunity to read. It's just that due to the way the decision was written, right now, we're at a bit of a standstill because it was always Mr. Rourke's intention to complete that last 100 feet along McQ Circle at the time that he was doing this work. We had discussed at the time that it didn't make sense to put a finish coat on and do the other finish items when you were going to be bringing heavy equipment through the area, doing more work. So for that reason, it was our understanding at the time that we left the meeting and we believe the minutes are consistent with our understanding that he was not going to have to put the top coat on, but that's not what the decision reads. So he's at a bit of a standstill right now as far as getting going and that's, that's what we want to address. Please.
Okay, what's the opinion of the board?
Am I mistaken? We approved this, the site plan in, or excuse me, the subdivision plan in 2018?
Yes. The new subdivision.
Yeah, the new one.
Yeah.
Yeah, McQ Circle was approved a long time ago and it's mostly built.
Did it involve any special permits? Do you know?
You mean from the zoning board?
No, from us.
We had to allow the, the road to go more than 1,000 feet for one thing.
Right. And well, our, our bylaw says that these things are, you know, invalid after two years if they haven't started construction. So Attorney Timmons, is there a reason why this, the permits are still valid?
Why? Well, it's not 1,000 feet. It's, it's, no. Yeah. McQ Circle is not over 1,000. It's not a thousand feet. It's, the distance is not an issue. And secondly, there's nothing in the decisions of that effect. Thirdly, there were all kind of, you know, I don't understand what happened frankly, post-approval with getting the plan signed so that it could be recorded. But there were issues that arose and that's been the only reason for the delay.
What I could, what I can read, it looked like it was a administrative thing to me. I, I, I agree with the attorney that it's very clear that we said it one way, but then in this written, this written decision, the wording got changed. And it looked like it was just a, you know, copying one line and copying to the next line type of, type of thing. But it looked to me that it was just just an administrative thing on our part.
And we would be happy for that reason, if there were simply even a letter from the board just clarifying for town boards that as Mr. Rourke seeks to go forward, any inconsistency between that condition and the fact that McQ Circle isn't currently complete can be disregarded. Because the fact of the matter is the development itself, once everything's done, it's, any sale of lots would be contingent on lot releases. So we're not too worried about the fact that what's recorded at the registry has this Scribner's error in it and we can fix that later if we need to. But right now, the real issue is that it's impeding his ability to start with the work.
Well, again, I, I need to bring up, under our definition of a special permit in our bylaws.
It's not 1,000 feet. It's not over.
Art being, chapter five, section five, any special permit granted by the SPGA, which is us, shall lapse if substantial user construction is not commenced within two years.
Yeah, that's a special permit.
It's not a special permit.
We're in front of the planning board on subdivision approval, which is under chapter 41. You're reading chapter 48 provides us.
Right.
Yeah. So there's a difference here and that doesn't apply.
But I, but that's what I asked earlier, is if, like allowing you to build that extension of the.
It's not a thousand, it's not older.
That was a special permit. That was my question. Is that, was that a special permit we approved?
Well.
No, it was a waiver.
Okay.
It was a waiver of subdivision.
So there were no special permits granting as part of the subdivision plan?
We have a subdivision approval and a plan that we tried to record. And, and those things got held up. And the subdivision approval has conditions within it, but there was no reference to what in any event, Mr. Rourke's indicating that even if that ordinance did apply, that we haven't gone that, that full extension, that distance, which is perhaps why it's not in the subdivision approval.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a quick question?
What?
So normally, I think how this would work is if you guys say, okay, it's a Scribner's error and we write a letter, then he can proceed to, but doesn't he have to, don't we need a checklist? Like a punch list of everything on McQ Circle to make sure it's all done except for the top coat?
Well, there are other issues.
Well, I, I know, but I just want to make sure before we move on to the new project, that everything the board wanted done. So if it's everything up to the top coat, right? Then everything up to the top coat would be done and then we could move on to the new project? I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to clarify that because I don't want to be six months down the road and there's confusion again. Mr. Timmons, just for your edification, those plans were here and signed. Mr. Rourke never picked them up. I emailed him.
Mr. Rourke was never noticed. Mr. Rourke was never noticed.
I emailed you, so I don't want to take any grief for the plans. They were sitting here the whole time.
Well, that's unfortunate that that happened. I have no idea how that could have happened, frankly. It's kind of stunning, but.
It is.
That, that's your client. And it's been recorded. And we're past all that. It's been recorded and the issue is now is completing the subdivision. And as Mr. Angel said, when you read the minutes, that's what we're trying to address, is just be consistent with that.
Okay, so can, can you guys tell me what your expectation is then, if the board were to vote tonight to call it a Scribner's error and we're done? So I, I guess normally when we go for like a roadway acceptance, like, because I think that was what the intent, if I'm remembering correctly. And I just want to be clear about this because I'm the one who has to deal with it.
I believe, I believe Dave Johnson, I believe Dave Johnson can tell you that in place, there is a checklist. There's, that went along with the fact that McQ Circle has been bonded. The issue that I've had in trying to sell 10 McQ Circle is the fact that everybody has a, has a question whether they can go and pull a building permit based upon the sale. Has nothing to do with the new, the, the new four lots. So basically people have questioned me. I've had three or four people that are interested in buying a lot. And they've questioned the fact that if they have, how can they, which is written, finish the road when the road is such? And if you go back and see, that's the discrepancy, which is number five in special conditions.
I guess what I'm saying to you guys tonight is say, we're going to resolve item number five, right?
Right.
Okay, so let's just pretend right at this moment, item five is resolved.
Understood.
Tomorrow, you have a buyer for two of those lots. Let's just say in that you need to put a road into the new, the new project, right? Now say like tomorrow, you want to start with the new project. I guess where I am is so normally, I think the board wanted this as close to being accepted as possible, right? But you didn't want to put the top coat on because with the new machine, the heavy machinery coming in, it would chew it all up and destroy the road. But you would have normally, like you said, Dave has a checklist of items that need to be complete on McQ Circle. Are those items going to be done? I guess I need guidance from somebody somewhere. I mean, if we get item number five corrected.
Yeah, I'm going to do it all at once, once I put down the road. What the primary things that Mr. Rourke would like to complete all at once, and this is typical in these types of situations, would be the last hundred feet of curbing, the last hundred feet of sidewalk, and then the top coat would go on. That's what he wants. Coinciding with the new road. Pardon me? Coinciding with the construction of the new road. Right, right, right. So those would be the items. And that's to your question. In addition to the top coat, it would be the final curbing and then the sidewalk. And as Mr. Rourke pointed out, it's all bonded now anyway, because we do understand we want to get this all done. And that's all got to go in because McQ Circle, or rather, the new approved subdivision requires the curbing and the other items as well. So this will allow it all to be integrated and installed in a one kind of finished uh, event, rather than having the continued segmentation.
David, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I guess there are, there are three issues here that need to be addressed by the board or at least acknowledged by the board is by this decision. I guess the first thing is, the first section of McQ Circle is substantially complete. There is a punch list and inspection list, which the last time I looked at it, I think I walked the site with Jim, there were, there were minor things to be done. The other issue with that is that it is bonded. The town has a cash bond to ensure the completion of that first section where all the houses are built. You have a bond to complete, what I'm calling the middle section. And once the new subdivision is ready to be built on, you'll be receiving a bond to cover that subdivision and the overlap of the intersections as part of the lot release. So it's it's approved, it's got a punch list, it's substantially complete and it's bonded. Probably the biggest thing that the board should understand here is that from a construction sequencing, it makes sense to do with the suggesting. And I think at the public hearing, I think, I know I expressed this and I think maybe even Rick Collins expressed this, but I'm not positive. I think the minutes may even reflect that. That to do this, to do this piecemeal, you're not going to get as good a project as if you do it all at once. You have consistent seamless pavement. You don't have to go in and cut back the pavement on McQ Circle at the intersection in order to get a fit. You pave it all at once, you're going to have a better project. And it's not only bringing the middle section up to paved paved surface, the final paved surface. All of that has to be excavated for the water connection, the sewer connection tie-in, the underground electric. So there's a lot of digging that has to go on in that section. So to push the paving of that section doesn't make a sense from construction sequencing or getting the best product in in the end. And so my recommendation is that the the board allow the middle section to be left the way it is and finished at the time, the Robert English Way is going to be binded and and top coated. Because it doesn't make any sense to 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 do any more work than is already out there. Especially since you have a cash bond. I think it's a cash bond, isn't it, Liz?
Cash bond, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so. And it's, and I think it's substantial.
Yeah, it's ninety-five thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah, so the town is fully protected. And I think if it's going to be accepted, both Robert English and McQ Circle, in my opinion, you're going to get a better product in the end by doing, by doing it in this manner.
Thank you, David. The board want to make a motion?
Well, yes, I'd make the motion to have that language changed in the, in the, from the clerk's office. So I guess we would have to send her what a letter just explaining that where they, where it's been done incorrectly.
That's correct.
Do you think, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Motion made. We have a second.
I have a, I have a, I have a comment. Uh, the only two questions I would ask are number one, is there a vote, a formal vote recorded at the registry of deeds? And number two, is there any notation on the approved plan with that condition? If there is, you should prepare a document to, and I'm sure Attorney Timmons can do it for the board, a document to put on record that that has a notation to the, to the plan to clarify it for any title examiners that that may look at the decision. So those are my two questions. Is the plan have a note on it that needs to be qualified? And is there a vote on record that needs to be qualified?
Hmm, well, I can address that, well.
Otherwise, otherwise, they're going to be back in front of you getting clarification because some title attorney has has found this and they're not going to close on the property until it gets resolved. So it's the time to hit it off is now.
So if if we could have Mr. Timmons send the letter to Liz so that we could see what the letter was that was going to be sent to the registry of deeds. I would be in favor of that, but we do need a motion and a second to allow for that. And it seems that only one member wants to make that motion.
Didn't Mr. Angel make the motion?
Please? How was that, Jim?
I thought Mr. Angel made the motion.
He did, but I'm looking for a second.
The chair can second it. I'm not certain why there wouldn't be a second on something. We're correcting a Scrivener's error.
Bruce or Rick, what's, what's your problem?
Well, I voted against this thing in the first place, as you recall, but I could understand this was a procedural error and even though Mr. Rourke should have picked up the plan. So I guess in order to make this right, since it's passed, I'll second this motion.
Is there any further discussion?
No.
No further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
And so, Mr. Timmons, you'll get a letter and and yes, to Liz and then she'll give you approval and then you can file that with the right.
All right. Thank you very much. I do that. And I appreciate Ms. Shea's assistance along the trail here. And Mr. Johnson. So thank you.
All right. It being six forty-five, site plan review. Sixty-seven Oak Street, continue.
Okay, I'm going to unmute Frank and Debbie. Maybe they just disappeared. There we go.
Good evening. Thank you for this time this evening. We have presented a PowerPoint presentation with some pictures and images of
Oh, is this Mr. Murphy?
Yes, it is.
I am so sorry. I'm trying to get to um, Mr. McKinnon.
There you are. No worries.
All right, I'm going to mute you back up. Sorry.
That's fine. Thank you.
Is Mr. McKinnon here?
Was he trying to get that to continue to something, Liz or not?
He was. He came in Friday. And he was confused about how the process worked. So I kind of walked him through what he needed to do. And he was going to get me a plan and come up today with that. So I thought I couldn't show you that. He has a I think with the photography on it, he was going to look at look for, and then he was going to ask for it to be continued. I don't know where he is. He didn't come up to the office today. And I haven't heard from him. I'd be happy to email him if you want to see if he can come in and talk to you guys. And you can move forward with six sixty-two.
This is sixty-seven Oak Street, right?
Yeah, he's so he's the neighbor to the right-hand side of Mr. Sullivan.
Right.
Bruce, is that your cellar?
That's the chairman's office.
I know. So do you want me to email him or do you want to just continue it?
Well, we have Mike and Debbie, right?
So those are the Murphys. There are Butters to the, to all of this. I see Mr. Attorney Whitney is here.
That's not that.
For six sixty-two. There's, there's nobody else here for sixty-seven Oak, I don't think.
I think we, I think we should move the sixty-seven Oak to next month, but.
Motion made next month by Bruce. Seconded by someone.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rick. Any further discussion? All those in favors to move it to May third, say aye.
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 Aye. So we'll as I start, I I probably caused a confusion as much as anyone because I said sixty-two first and then realized it was sixty-seven Oak. So being six forty, site plan review, six six-two, Adams Street, continue.
Hey, I'm just going to unmute Attorney Whitney. And Sean Hardy, Mike, you're all set?
Yep.
Sean Hardy, you're in, right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, Attorney Whitney, you're all set?
Yes, I am. Thank you.
You're welcome. Did, do you guys want Clark Brewer here too?
Um, if you could join him in, he is on the team.
Okay. And before we start real quick, I just want everybody who's listening to know that if you want to talk, please indicate that in the chat box. Um, so I can keep a list of the order of people who want to speak after the board does their, their thing and has their questions answered. Thank you.
Ms. Shea, have you put that in the chat box to tell people?
Okay, good. Yep.
Mr. Weedy, Whitney, do you want to hand with it at this point?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Ronald Whitney, on behalf of the petitioner, Robert Sullivan. The board is well acquainted with this property. We've been before you on many occasions seeking site plan review. I do believe that after all these months, we come here before you tonight with a great deal of optimism that this would be approved by your board. The engineer Sean Hardy is with us this evening and he would be glad to elaborate on the changes that have taken place in the plan since the last time that we before you, but just quickly, and then I'll let attorney, engineer Sean Hardy delve into it a little bit more. The issues primarily five issues that were of concern to Mr. Perrault and to the board generally, when we met on March first, and that was whether or not the area that would be employed for the parking of the heavy equipment vehicles that Mr. Sullivan uses for snow plowing operations during the winter season. Would that be paved or would it be gravel? The plan that you had before you tonight shows that in fact, the entire parking area for the vehicles will be paved. The second issue was the driveway into the property. And initially, you recall, a couple of months ago, we had two driveways in. One has been eliminated. The second has been moved since the last plan over towards the house. And there has been a ten-foot buffer strip provided on the south side of that driveway. And the driveway has been reduced in width to fifteen feet. And additionally, as the third item of concern that the board had was the turning radius onto Route fifty-eight has been accommodated for in accordance with state rules, regulations. And lastly, as far as the major points, there was an issue with the catch basin and the inlet protection, and that has been addressed by the plan. Your engineer, I'll let him speak for himself certainly, but provided us a letter that was sent to your board as well dated May, March thirteenth. And in it, he addresses some of the conditions that the board might place on your approval if you so inclined. And we don't have an issue with any of those conditions. However, one of the conditions I do want to speak to, and that is the condition that there be regular inspections of the work. And it is open-ended. It is specifically on page two of that March thirteenth letter. And it talks in paragraph E to an independent construction observation service. And it's not limited scope as to the cost that Mr. Sullivan might incur. And it's, I I think from my experience, and the board can tell me differently, but from my experience in these cases, the plan is typically approved. And then the petitioner goes about his work and is required before employing the use that is proposed. It's required that he file and have approved an as-built plan. And I'm not sure that there is a necessity to vary from that standard course of action. This is a relatively small project. The project is, the site is approximately twenty-four thousand square feet. Mr. Sullivan seeks simply to be able to park some of this heavy equipment on the site. The equipment won't be moving back and forth on a daily basis. When this equipment goes out for the season, it generally sits in a shopping mall parking lot or aside a road that it will be employed on. So there's very minimal traffic in and out. And 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 I would just say that again, as I've said in previous meetings, we acknowledge that there were some miscues and some missteps on behalf of Mr. Sullivan. And this process, I understood the angst of the board the last time before you has taken longer for us to get here than perhaps it should have. But the point that I'd make is that we're here. I, and I'll wait to hear Mr. Perrault's comments, but I, in reading his letter, I, I think we're here. And I just simply say that Sean Hardy, do you have something that you would like to add to that discussion before anything further said?
I think you summed up
Both what the changes were and what the comments were. And I think. I see Mr. Peralta here. I think he says he wants to discuss that condition, but. I I agree with you, Attorney Whitney, that it seems kind of open ended and burdensome, particularly the language of having somebody on site for the entirety of the paving. That seems very unusual for a site plan review. Some of the other milestones as well. I I it just seems like that's something that is probably rarely if ever been a condition on a site plan review that I've ever seen or a small project like you said.
I I probably would like to just say a couple of words. I know I was probably the first person to talk to Mr. Sullivan on this project. And I do know that what he told me and what he said to me on that call was not correct. And I have, I'm a little nervous about letting construction work go on in there without having it observed. And the reason for that, and and as Mr. Whitney said, in many cases, we are not there. We are always there when it comes to putting asphalt out on especially on subdivision control and so forth. And the other thing is, is that from time to time, we have had contractors that have done work that we have not checked when it was done as what was supposed to be done. And we've had to go in there and do borings and everything, and that gets to be expensive also. So. Many times it's better to observe it on the site. And I would leave it at that at this moment and then have Michael talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The the letter that I sent to the board and the to the design engineer. There are two outstanding issues that need to be resolved, and that's part of the conditions that they provide a detailed landscaping plan for that buffer between the relocated driveway and the neighbor to the south. And secondly, that they specify the the loam thickness for all those places that they're tearing out material and restoring it with loam and seed. So that's items A and B. Item E has to deal with construction observation services. And based on the nature of this project and the reluctance to comply with a lot of the requirements of the board. This is a prime example of why oversight has to be performed for the board by someone that's independent. Whereas there are other cases where the design engineer working for the applicant will prepare an ASBIL. There's inherent conflict of interest when it comes to the certifications of an ASBIL and meeting his clients mandates versus having someone that's independent observing construction and reporting to the board as their agent that the conditions of what they wanted on this site have been properly complied with. Now, the the critical thing is, is that sediment erosion control needs to go into play. Secondly, that in-ground system, if it's that's not done correctly, then we have water now going on to a budding properties. And so that's critical that that be observed and that the bottom be inspected and the item is called out be inspected, especially with the fact of the oil grease traps and everything else be done. Rating, final grading necessary that the water gets where it's supposed to go. If it's not graded properly, it's not going to go as supposed to go. It's not going to go in the ground. It's going to go on the neighbors. And then the paving. Since this project has been so contentious with putting pavement down there. See, wording on here is such that it basically will provide the board with assurances that there will be pavement to the adequate thicknesses put onto this site and not a skim coat of paint instead of pavement put onto this site. That's that's kind of critical, that that be done properly and not fail. So the only way to ensure that is to actually have it observed. And it's a part time observation for most things on the site, but the pavement full time. That's going to be done within a day's time period to get that completed. So the final thing is the ASBIL check, and that's pretty common. So these things are typically performed, as you said, Mr. Chairman, for subdivisions. They've been performed for site plans such as the gas station at the corner of Adams and one thirty nine. That had inspections for all the in-ground systems on that station. And rightly so, because when they dug it down, it was right smack dab into the groundwater. And they had a contaminated product and they had to remove. So there is a time that you need to have someone with eyes on representing the board on a project. So that's the background of why that was added into this recommendation for approval.
Any comments on the board?
Mike, a couple of questions from me. Just to make sure. Are you satisfied that the stormwater systems and the grease traps and oil traps and all that are sufficient for the usage?
If properly installed, yes.
Okay. The the area behind the the big area where they're going to be storing, it's basically going to be flat for the most part, correct? But with a slight pitch towards the towards the drainage areas?
Yes, everything will slope to the to the inlet structure for the in-ground system. So it is relatively flat.
Okay. I have other questions for the applicant, but I don't know if anyone else wants to ask Mike anything before we get that way.
Mike. You know, given the history of this project, you know, and to me, the most important part of your letter really is is the E. Because there hasn't been any oversight of this project. And I think that the point that you make in your letter. He will ensure that oversight is finally done to this project. I mean, there's it's been so many egregious things been done on this project. I would absolutely insist if we vote to you know, prove this tonight, that this that this E particularly be included in this. And I thank you for putting yours this in your comment, Michael.
You're welcome.
Do you have some other questions, Rick?
Yeah. So just so I make sure I'm understanding some of this right. The shaded areas along the edge of the property are going to be loam and seed?
Yes.
And that's how how much of a width is that?
That varies. It's it's at least ten feet.
Okay.
There's one area that's five feet that's adjacent to the garage that's existing.
Okay. Usually requires part of site plan to have utilities included on these plans. Is a I don't, am I missing them?
This, they were discussed. It's a water and sewer service that that go to the to the house there in the front yard.
Okay. Will there be any lighting in the back lot?
No. There's none proposed. I think there's a note on the plan stating that as well.
Okay. So on the back of the lot is where we see start to see that pile of, I guess, what was taken out of the hillside. Part of it is on this property, part of it is on the adjoining property. Is that correct?
Correct.
So. You're proposing to leave that two to three feet of fill on the edge of the property?
Yes.
Is it going to be changed or altered? Because right now it's kind of dumped there. It's going to be, you know, stepped down. It's going to be landscaped. It's going to be left there. What's what's going to happen with that?
We're not proposing to regrade it. And just as with women and seed can be seeded at the base of it on our property. It's kind of shown in that hatched area, I guess, to be seeded.
All right. I mean, that that's a question I like. I'd be curious to get the board's thoughts as well, because this is the pile that they took out of the hillside and then just dumped it on the property line. And frankly, I don't think it's appropriate for either business where it is. But I'd be interested to hear what the board has to say as well. I believe in the letter, Mr. Peralta, you also talked about what the use of the house will be.
Yeah. That was. Item C that will require that a new site plan submission and approval, subsequent approval by the board is going to be required about the proposed building use with the condition that the ICMC of the building has to confirm this adequate parking and loading to meet the requirements for that proposed use under the that section of the of the bylaw. And that the final site plan that gets submitted to the board contains note to that effect.
Is there a plan for that house as of now? Because I don't believe we allow a residential use on a commercial property like this, do we?
If I may speak to that, Mr. Collins, there there will be future plans for that house. But right now, that is not what we're here before the board on. And we understand Michael Peralta's comments and completely intend to comply with them. Whether and if that house is put to use, we will be back before your board or before the zoning board to seek appropriate zoning.
Is it vacant now or is there an occupant?
As you might recall from back in January, there isn't occupant there now. He has been there while Mr. Sullivan has been in limbo through this process. And it would be Mr. Sullivan's plans to remove the tenant. Once this is approved and he can go forward with his project to run his business out of property.
Okay. What is going to be used along the boundary of the Kearney property? Is it going to be a six foot fence or what are we doing here?
Mr. Sullivan, if you could speak to that, I believe there's going to be a six foot fence as well as plantings. But Sean, I don't know if you would.
There's already an eight foot fence along that perimeter.
Shouldn't be.
We proposed, we proposed to put screening or plantings. Green giant arborvitae along his rear and down a portion of the driveway to screen his view from his residence of the trucks in the back or the equipment to the back. We didn't see a need or I shouldn't say a need, but the logic in planting them down the driveway when its previous use was house looking at house. It's continued at the moment as house looking at house.
I see in the plan, eight arborvitae. Is that what the plan is, is to do eight of them?
It'll be evenly spaced. We have, I think they're spaced at ten feet right there. We plan to put in a green giant arborvitae. They grow pretty quick and they grow pretty wide. We want to give them a little bit of room so that they can grow onto each other and fill in.
All right. I have some grave doubts about whether this is an appropriate buffer for this type of use and the residential use next to it. But I'll let the other board members speak.
Well, if you look at my conditions of approval, it's required, it requires a plan to come in for the for the plantings along the driveway for screening. Because I am in agreement that that the trucks that are coming in and out, they may be parked in that driveway for the time being while the temporary moving in and out. So a screening of that project would require plantings all the way down the driveway. And that's that's one of the notes of what the technical review comments that we're we're missing. And item A basically says you need to provide that landscape plan for that buffer.
I mean, my concern is that if all they're doing is a ten foot strip of grass, that there's nothing stopping them from just basically parking stuff on top of that ten foot strip of grass. And now you're right up against the fence and you're conducting activities right up in that buffer. So that's one of my concerns.
Well, I think if I understand Mike Peralta's comments that what he's recommending is that it be a condition of your board's approval that a planting plan comes before you for approval. Is that what you're saying, Mike?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I actually have a question because when he put that, when he shared the plan, look like the one I have here, and I was about to bring it up, that the plan I have here is not the one that that Mike says that he has in his minutes in his letter. His has a date, C two dated three eight twenty one. And mine mine is February fourth twenty one. But they look, they looked alike there.
Mike, you might.
Do you guys have on your drawings? Is it the date? Do you have the March date on yours?
Oh, the the.
That that plan has a lower date. The last revision was three eight.
And he marked up. It's on the screen.
Hopefully you could see the my screen share with the markup.
Yeah.
I see three eight.
Don't have that plan.
It's not.
Last plan I have is revision date of two four.
That's that's the plan that's on the screen.
Okay. So what's the plan they're referring to is March eighth?
No, the the plan that's on the screen is March eighth.
It says date, Liz, and then it says latest revision.
Right.
The bottom, right?
It says two four, but below it, it says latest revision three.
Yeah, you can see versus David in Massachusetts.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. It's on the other side. Okay.
Well, I guess I still have, then I guess I have a lot of questions because that fence that was put up alongside the neighbor's house self is ridiculous. It's if you stand in, I, the neighbor sent a book full of photographs. And it was very, very, very helpful to see how things progressed on the site and what things are now. But I mean, it's absolutely absurd. It's like, boy, talk about someone flipping somebody off. From their yard, they put up that obscenely high fence with those blocks, blocks of cinder right against, right against their fence. Makes no sense whatsoever. And I thought we'd see a plan that was going to be revised where, you know, that those retaining walls would be pulled back fifteen feet away from that fence. You know, I I've just, I guess I'm, I guess I'm just now I'm I'm just confused now. I didn't, this this looks like the same plan that Mike's got marked up on the screen. It is though, right? That's the same one that you've got all your yellow comments on?
That's that's the way this vision of the plan based on all of the comments from the board on March first. It was revised on March eighth a week later.
Well.
And I mean, the comments that went into this were, as Attorney Whitney stated in the beginning, we we addressed all the comments other than we show proposed parking. I changed slightly made the buffer be bigger. It's like eleven feet because to make the lot coverage number work, we provided the radiuses down by the street, provided the note about erosion control. A little bit more detail about the piping connections going into the drainage system. And the only remaining comments to our understanding were that and as indicated on this plan was that to make a note that the loam has to be four inches deep and that the area extend from where we stopped those arborvitae out to the street to show landscaping plan for that. So that's what we thought were the final comments relative to that.
Jeff, so just so you know that that behind the Butters house that has the block wall, that area is being loamed and seeded and it drains to the drainage system on the property. If they were to tear out that block wall, the drainage wouldn't be confined and would be going off site onto the neighbor's property.
Okay.
And Mike, on the conditions of approval, you could, you know, you have A through E. But I mean, you know, you could almost have an F to, you know, require. To, you know, require. Screening, screen, you know, going from the front of your letter. As a, as a condition F, it would be provide screen plantings. And, you know, in the specified long depth. As a condition of approval of this thing. See where I'm going with this?
Yeah, he that that is one of his proposed conditions.
It's it's not specified, you know, in the second page of the letter, it's there's A through.
Condition B.
As far as conditions of approval.
Those are already, he has a condition B that says a four inch loom depth is to be provided.
Okay.
And then a new site, and then he said a final. Where is the provide a detailed screening landscape plan, game size. So that's condition A.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
And it actually specifies with the common property. Six fifty two. So that describes it going all the way to the street.
Any other questions at this point? Did, can you walk me through again that? Southern boundary in terms of what's there now and what will be there in the future? Well, right now we see that there's, there's the, the blocks and the fence that's up there and. You know, the, the fill of with the gravel. How is that going to be remediated and? Built with the new stuff?
There will be a 10 foot loomed. And landscapes. Based on the planting plan that is required by Mr. Peral's letter. That will come before you before it's planted, before. The board has any sign off on this plan as built, you will see it. In the as-built plan, you will hear back from your consulting engineer who's on site watching it constructed. And you'll see it in the final. Well, the final last bill plan, I should say. But it'll be in the plant, planting plan. The engineers review and then the as-built plan, you'll see it all.
Will the concrete blocks remain or are those being removed?
Yeah, those will remain. Now, as Mr. Peral just said, one of the benefits of those blocks is that they do shield the water back to the site as opposed to running off onto another site.
And all the questions I'll ask for public comment.
Okay, I actually had. Mr. Kearney asked if Mr. Nagel could speak for him. Can you take your screen down so I can? Stop sharing the screen so I can see everybody. Thank you. All right. Mr. Nagel. You need to unmute. There you go. You should have.
Okay, great. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Donald Nagel. I represent the butter, Patrick and Susan Kearney. At six fifty two Adams Street. Today I submitted a letter to the board addressing this matter. Hopefully you've had a chance to review it. But I'll summarize it briefly. The. The abiders opposed this application. For many reasons, but I'll just address some of them. First of all, the applicant is blatantly in violation of the zoning bylaws of the town. They're conducting two different uses on the same lot. Residential and and commercial industrial is alluded to by one of the board members. It doesn't sound like they're planning on changing that status anytime soon either. They're conducting commercial industrial activities without prior approval. And they're making physical changes to the property to accommodate this use. Without any approval. Obviously, this. You know, this board is entertaining an approval. But pending right now are four different stopper quarters. Issued by. Various boards, various entities of the town, including the Department of Inspections. This board and Town Council. The applicant is creating. Nuisance conditions, including noise, dust, smoke. Vibration and threatens the health and safety of the abiding residential property. The Kearneys and they violate and they're violating their rights to quiet enjoyment of the property. And it appears. By all appearance that this proposal. Is not going to abate those, those problems. And the applicant continues to be in flagrant violation of those stopper quarters. Yet I understand this board is feels bound to entertain this application. But this application seeks waivers from the conditions of the bylaw. That are designed to mitigate the very impacts that are now being endured by the Kearneys. My letter goes into some detail about what those waivers are and how they're. Would ensure further nuisance conditions to the Kearneys. Kearneys, but just observing the, the plan that was put up. I understand that they're still proposing a 10 foot unvegetated buffer. Between their driveway. And and my client's property. My understanding is a 20 foot buffer requirement with landscaping and screening. Other board members have already, have already raised this as being inadequate. I also note that the stormwater management system. Is right up against the Kearney's property, back property line. And the back property, the back lot, if you will, of the. Of the applicant's lot, I understand is going to be paved. So I could just imagine, you know, the stormwater is going to go, it's going to end up in the Kearney's basement. Not handled by the stormwater management system. Although the stormwater management. Guidelines and calculations are beyond my, my purview certainly, and I would rely on the. The peer reviewer to scrutinize that. But it doesn't look good for the Kearneys. I could tell you that. So the. And finally, the one requirement that's not met that I believe is fatal to this project. Is the lack of adequate frontage. There's only 73 feet of frontage on this lot. And the bylaw requires 90 feet. So, you know, for that reason alone. This project should be denied. And for all the reasons that I indicated tonight and in my letter that I submitted to the board today. I requested the board deny this application. A request to Town Council seek an injunction. Against these ongoing violations in spirit court. Town Council cease and desist order was ignored. And I understand the town indicated that if that were the case. If they would ask Town Council to seek an injunction. So I request that this board urge Town Council to do just that. Is seek an injunction requiring that the applicant. Cease any industrial or commercial activity on property that was. Previously or current and currently used as a pre-existing non-conforming residential use. And require the applicant to remove all structures and equipment from the property. And and cease those unlawful uses.
If I may be heard, Mr. Chairman, the board is ready. Thank you. On behalf of the applicant, I can appreciate that Attorney Nagel comes in here. At this hour, which I would characterize as the 11th hour in this process, because we have been before you for some seven or eight months. It's unfortunate that the letter comes forward today. Because we don't have a chance to look at it, to review it and to be prepared to rebut it. But just a few things that Attorney Nagel says that I'd like to clarify. Firstly, the frontage on this lot is grandfathered. And if we go up and down Plymouth Street, most of the frontages on Plymouth Street are grandfathered frontages. These are lots that have been. Set down in our registry of deeds records for years and years. And so the Kearney's lot.
It's grandfathered for a residential use.
It's.
Have Mr. Whitney answer the questions and then we can get back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it, it, when a lot is grandfathered, it's not grandfathered as per use. It's grandfathered in that district. So if the zoning board or the town meeting. Later determines that a frontage of 200 feet or 150 feet is necessary, but the lot predates zoning. Does the frontage or the particular dimensional requirements of that lot. Are the dimensional requirements that pre-existed the zoning. So at the time this lot was created. It was 70 feet or less and and it does have the 70 feet. So the fact that a new use is put to it. That is simply not an accurate and that would defend our prosecution against this project. As it has been existing as a 70 foot lot with 24,000 square feet since time immemorial. Number one. Number two. Attorney Nagel points that there are different uses being put to the property right now. There aren't, if I'm not mistaken, the board, this board has a cease and desist order on Mr. Sullivan. To using his property in a commercial context. And he is honoring that in what it's being used for right now presently. As was mentioned earlier, is a residence and this is the single guy living there who was working for Mr. Sullivan, who needed housing because of a family situation. And so Mr. Sullivan put him in there with the understanding that he would go once this was approved. Then he was able to go forward with this commercial activity on site. So. The other thing is with respect to that, that right in the letter. It states, Mr. Peral's letter states that, you know, any use of that building. It's going to have to come back before your board or the zoning board and the applicant. Done well knows that he is very well aware of that and he intends to respect that. Additionally, the property is in an industrial zone. And it is an allowed use and Mr. Nagel wants to suggest that, you know, perhaps there's some noxious. Aspect of that use, but Mr. Sullivan intends to be, to try to be a good neighbor because, you know, he knows at the end of the day. That that will cause some far fewer headaches to be a good neighbor and to just try to peacefully coexist. Even though Mr. Kearney decided to buy a house in the industrial zone. Perhaps he wasn't foreseeing that someday the property next door could be used for industrial purpose, but it isn't a lot of use. And as far as the 10 foot buffer strip in the bylaw specifically. Don't have the chapter, verse 27528, but don't hold me to that. It says specifically that the. A screening with fence and adequate plantings is a an allowed. Buffer and that's what's proposed by the applicant. So. I, I, I fail to see that, that anything that Attorney Nagel has said changes. The scope and complexion of what we have here before you after all of these months. I think that the applicant again has gone forward in good faith to address every single one of the issues that were brought up at the last meeting. Would respectfully ask that the board go forward and approve this project. Thank you.
Nagel, you wanted to respond.
Yeah, briefly. Yeah, it may be the 11th hour for my appearance, but. As everybody knows, Pat Kearney has been actively involved in this from day one. Trying to get his neighbor to comply with the applicable. Rules of, of the, of the town. And has petitioned this board, the board of selectmen. The inspectional services and others to do that. So, you know, notwithstanding the comforting words of Attorney Whitney. The track record of the applicant belies those words and there are serious. This project poses a serious nuisance condition to my client. It already has. You know, it already has been converted from a residential use to an industrial use without approval. And that activity has already impacted my client. And just because he's coming back to get a after the fact permit. Doesn't mean the sins of the past have gone away. It's only an indication that they're going to continue in the future. The concerns that the board has expressed about. Has built and oversight of this project are very well founded. My sense is the board is concerned about. Even if the, what the site approval, site approval is issued with carefully drafted conditions. There continues to be a concern that those conditions are going to be complied with. So I think under all these circumstances whereby. The use, the residential use has been unlawfully converted to an industrial use without prior approval. And all these stopper quarters have been issued that have not been complied with. That it's a perfectly reasonable basis for this board to deny this application. And require the applicant to comply with all these, all these orders. And then if it wants to come back after it's complied with the orders. By ceasing the illegal activities, by removing all the structures and equipment. In storage of materials used in support of the industrial use. Then perhaps the, the board may be interested in entertaining a new application, but. Based on what I've heard tonight, it doesn't sound like there's much confidence at all. And in compliance with any approval this board. May issue. And therefore, I believe based on what has been submitted thus far. This application should be denied.
Just, just briefly, Mr. Chairman, just briefly, two things that I wanted to answer and return to Mr. Nagel. First, and his initial comments, he suggested that the stormwater system that is employed. Or to be employed on the site is not adequate. Well, we've got two engineers before us that are telling us it's adequate and not too self-interested engineers. In fact, one that is working on behalf of your board that has looked at the system, looked at the runoff. And made the calculations and determined that it is perfectly fit. And secondly, Attorney Nagel suggests that there's a difficulty with compliance. And I think the board and, and Mike Peral, to your credit. Has put in to a potential decision in his March 13th letter. And we talked about it at length at the beginning of this meeting. The necessity for observing an engineer. To review each one of the steps that has been taken by Mr. Sullivan. In going forward with the compliance with the site plan. It would provide, I would suggest, notwithstanding Attorney Nagel's comments, it would provide plenty of oversight. And plenty of assurance to the board that what is promised to be done in the site plan and in the planting plan that will follow. Will in fact be done and the board has, as the board well knows, the ultimate authority to not prove the as-built plan. When, when the time comes that that comes before you. Thank you.
Are there any other people who would like to speak on this?
There are, Mr. Chairman, I am going to unmute Frank and Debbie.
Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Frank Murphy from Oak Street. I appreciate the time being allowed to speak and the discussion that we've had tonight is very good. I'd like to point out that it's very difficult for the board to provide future oversight. Uh, we are a residential neighborhood and quite honestly, what we don't want is another North Quincy Street to develop right in front of our very eyes. The gentleman has past performance issues complying with town bylaws. It's a nuisance operation in our viewpoint as residential butters. Uh, I have questions as to future operations, as, you know, how many vehicles will be allowed on the property? What are their hours of operation? Uh, what kinds of vehicles? Is there a limit on the type of vehicle? You know, right now he's presently storing, uh, vehicles and trailers when the attorney said that he was not using the property. You know, what happens when the screening trees die off? Do they get replanted? So, in, to sum up, it is a very problematic situation for a high-use industrial area. Uh, it's been mixed use. There has been work going on. There has been noise issues as recently as this past week, uh, from people revving their automobiles on the property past work hours. At, you know, I'm eight hundred or nine hundred yards, well, not, yeah, call it a thousand feet away. And I could hear it from behind my house. I can't even imagine what the Kearneys must have been having to listen to during that event. So I would ask the board to please consider the residential neighborhood. This is the largest investment of our lives is living in this neighborhood in Edmonton. And I really would hate to see it negatively impacted by someone who's been so careless in the past with no assurances and very difficult oversight situations for the town. So thank you very much and good night.
Can I speak?
Well, so we have Liz.
Can I speak to Frank and Debbie's point?
No, I think, um, Pat Kearney, did you want to speak? You're writing in the chat box. I didn't know if you wanted to speak.
Can I respond?
Can I address the point for?
Wait, wait a minute. We have a number of people that want to talk at this point.
All right, Pat, I'm un, I'm unmuting you.
I've been asking.
We, we, we will let everyone talk. I, sometimes it's better if we talk and then answer afterwards. So I, I just, I, we have our four people that want to speak at the same time, so.
Okay, Pat Kearney is, is, uh, unmuted.
Yeah, th- thank you, Liz. Anything I need to say, I think, I think Mr. Nagel's pretty much covered. If, if he's got something else to add, um, as to, as to the change of use needing to conform to the new zoning bylaws, so the frontage does not comply. Um, I think that's, I, I, I don't want to step on your toes, sir. I'll let you speak for me.
So you're, you're all, you're all done and?
Well, I, I think my attorney had something else to say, yes.
You're, you're, okay. Mr. Nagel?
I have to unmute him. Okay.
Yeah, just to, to get back to the point about frontage, uh, I believe that, uh, Attorney Whitney and I have a disagreement over, um, whether or not there's compliance with, uh, frontage for an industrial use. Uh, this is a, I, this is a lot that is a grandfathered lot and it's a pre-existing non-conforming, uh, use for, uh, residential. Once that use changes to a new use, all bets are off and current zoning, uh, applies. And current zoning requires a ninety, ninety-foot frontage. So for that reason alone, this application should be, should be denied. Uh, it simply doesn't comply.
Okay, you, you've made that point and, and thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you want to respond to that because I know we, we, we've had that discussion come up earlier and you explained it quite eloquently.
I've always taken it that the lot is zoned industrial, uh, with, with the enactment of the district. The lot is pre-existing. It's pre-existing, non-conforming for both residential and industrial. Currently, the use on the property prior to the alterations was residential. It's, it's industrially zoned. It can be used industrially zoned and based on the use that they're meeting, in my opinion, the zoning requirements. However, the building inspector is still weighing in on all of this and all my correspondence has gone to the building inspector. Building inspector is holding off any decisions he may make based on the final outcome of the planning board. If the building inspector, who is a zoning enforcement officer, not the planning board, finds that, yes, this lot was residential and yes, it needs to have ninety feet of frontage in order to conform for its use, then the zoning enforcement officer will let the applicant know that in violation of zoning, he'll need to get relief in that matter. But relief does not come from the planning board. So based on, on my interpretation, and I'm not a lawyer and I'm not a zoning enforcement officer, but a practicing civil engineer, that this lot appears to be a non-conforming grandfathered for the proposed development to the rear of the property.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Peralt.
Mr. Chairman, I have a, um, a note from Sean Hardy, the applicant's trying to answer some questions. Would you like me to unmute Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Hardy? Okay?
Please.
Okay, you're all set.
To Frank and Debbie's comments, um, I don't know, they said they live on Oak Street. I don't know their address. I don't know if they're in the three hundred-foot range to my property. I think they may have me confused with the, uh, a butter to me from the north. There's been no activity on my property, um, other than the person that lives in the house. Um, and they park to the right. There's no cars out back revving their engines. There's no trailers on the property. So I'm confused as to what they might be hearing and directing it towards my project here.
Okay. Now, I think that may be the, the tenant property, which was going to be coming up this evening, but it's extended, who, I've forgotten whether it's a May meeting or, no meeting.
I have somebody else that'd like to speak, Mr. Chairman, and I'm not going to insult them by butchering their name. I'd just like to unmute them.
Okay.
Thank you. Where did they go?
They're there.
Oh, there you are. Okay, there you go.
I, I, I will not be offended. I encourage everyone to try to spell, pronounce my name.
How do you pronounce it so we can get it right?
It's Becca.
Becca.
Yes.
Becca.
Um, in support of what Frank and Debbie had mentioned, I know that within the last two weeks, and unfortunately I did not write time and date. I do recall hearing an engine because I also remember, I thought it was an odd hour and looked out my window and there was, um, at least one vehicle on your property that was running. I can't, I unfortunately can't tell you what time that was, but I thought it was odd for that to be doing that, so it was close to the weekend and after hours. Say again?
Could I have your address, please, for the minute?
Six four seven Adams. I'm right across the street.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Nagel has written that the building inspector needs to make a determination on frontage requirements before the planning board makes a decision. I also think he'd like to speak. He could have his hand up.
Go ahead.
All right.
Was there anyone else, uh, that was wanting to speak?
Okay, Mr. Nagel is unmuted.
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just to, uh, make the point about the frontage. It sounds like perhaps what should be done is that the building inspector, as a zoning enforcement officer, should make a determination on the question of the, uh, frontage, uh, and whether that disqualifies his projects or not, uh, or if, uh, some relief, uh, is required. Uh, that that determination should be made prior to the, this board making a decision on the site plan approval.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Anybody?
Rick.
Go ahead, Rick.
And then I can give me a little sandal.
I believe one of the butters raised a good question about, um, I don't know if we've discussed much, how many vehicles, the type of vehicles that's going to be stored on site. I know it was briefly discussed five, six months ago in terms of what it's being used for. But going forward, what are the plans for, for use? Do, how many, what types, uh, as well as hours of operation?
Okay, um, Mr. Attorney Whitney, you wanted to speak, correct? I'm unmuting Attorney Whitney. Okay, you're all set.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. May I just suggest that there's a little bit of red herring being thrown out here? I mean, we listened to, uh, the engineer, consulting engineer, and what he said, a perfect logical sense. And that is, this application has been before the board for months. We all know, we're all tired of it, honestly. And we just want to see something, you know, move forward. And this project doesn't move forward if the building inspector hereafter says that there's a problem with the frontage. I am ninety-nine point nine-five percent confident in saying that the frontage and the grandfathered nature of this lot does not change based on the use. A lot is in an industrial district. It has seventy feet. There's no way it's going to hit more than seventy feet unless somebody buys a joint block and the two lots get merged, uh, for zoning purposes. That's, that, that's not on the table. What's on the table is the lot as it has been configured for years. And if, if this board were to go forward with a vote tonight and if, if we're a vote in the affirmative, um, based on what Mr. Peralt says and based on what Massachusetts law is, um, this project will not go forward if the building inspector steps in and says, I, I've read the grandfathered watch stat and, and, and statute and, and I've determined that there's going to be a, it's necessary. Well, it's off to the zoning board we go. I, I, I'm confident in saying that, that whole, um, specter is not going to, uh, play itself out, uh, that the lot exists, has existed for years and it's a grandfathered lot.
Thank you.
The GM and Jeff would like to speak.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Well, it's been my experience from building from town to town that when you, when you, once you make that change of views, whether it's grandfathered or not, you're, you are in a whole other league. You have to start, you have to abide by the rules. But I wanted to address more specifically to our board that we don't have the jurisdiction to say that, yes, you can have a ten, ten-foot, uh, buffer zone. The code, the zoning calls for twenty feet. The only people that can give that kind of relief is the zoning board. And.
I don't think.
No, absolutely. Would you, but, but, you know, on a legal sense of things, and the attorney could beat me up on this all day, but, but, uh, the board, we have very limited authority. One of them was, we can't, we can't, I mean, we could, i- if it's said in, if it's said in the bylaw that, uh, if the, the board had the option to change the size of the, of the setback by our, our, uh, you know, some of the, like, some of the waivers we do, where we have, it's written into the zoning that we can grant certain waivers. This is not, this is not a waiver that we have the authority over. Uh, that's, that's my take on this. And other part of this is that, I keep, but this, this whole project kind of came backwards to me. The way I thought about it, this started off as a fill, a, a, a thing about fill and then it became the neighbors fighting. And then all of a sudden finding out that we've got a site plan review going, you know, because I was, it was the way this thing's been dragging along here. But I, I, I'll tell you, right until you feel comfortable discussing this project until we have acknowledgement from the building inspector that this site has been cleared of vehicles, people, everything. Cease and desist order has been met, then we can talk about it. Only if the zoning board has, have made their decision that, because otherwise we're, we're deciding something, got to go to the zoning board for approval anyway, uh, before they, and they'd have to come back again. And, and if looking at this, if I had to, I'm not, not picking on the, the owner and the developer, I'm the owner. I'm, I'm just sticking it from a personal, straight from a technical point of view and of how it would be approached in any town I went into is, uh, the, the, the way they dealt with the boundary to the, next to the Kearney's house is just, it, it's just not something that we would have ever, if, if someone came before us and said, these are, this is what we're proposing, because they're not proposing this, they've already done it. So, so proposing, you, you, you'd ever, I assumed you'd ever received those photographs from the neighbor, from Mr. Kearney. And the absurdity that this board would ever think to, to, to allow a fence to be built that ridiculously high above theirs, right up against theirs with these big blocks. Basically, this kind of comes down to, unfortunately, without taking the house down, it can't comply. It needs the house down and it, I'm not going to tell how it has to be done. But if it can't, you know, if it can't fit in there, it can't fit in. If it needs twenty-foot, twenty-foot setback, it has to have a twenty-foot setback unless they have it ruled otherwise. Or they work another way that, I got a twenty-foot, here's my driveway, we're going to get rid of the house, whatever they need to do to comply to it. This would be a whole different story if it was a developer we had in town that has shown, has proved themselves that they, they, their word, that they, they're going to do a nice project. We, we, we have enough people to come in, we, we know that, we go, that we know they've done a great project, they're going to work with us, et cetera, that we would, you know, talk about doing a ten-foot boundary, putting the, uh, the, 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 the big blocks up against the property boundary. But this is, this wasn't the case, it happened. And, uh, I, I don't think that the owner started off doing anything to directly, uh, harm anybody. Honestly, I, I just think he, but I look at the work he did, like any project I've ever dropped into where they just spreading it out and they're making use of their property. I think the only thing you can know is that he needed to have, uh, because he changed the use, that he needed a site plan review. That, that's not uncommon because I have enough clients that get themselves into trouble all the time. They start going forward and they didn't realize they need site plan review, then I get a phone call. And, and that, and that's what, it always comes out that way, that they just didn't realize it was one extra step. It's, it's not like there's a sign on the road says you have to have site plan approval if you change your use. Most people are just working day to day. But I'm just saying as a board, I, looking at this project as a site plan review, they forget about all the work they've done to date. I could, could never imagine ever voting for what, what I see out there today. And, and that, that fence is probably just the worst offender of it all. I appreciate that, that they're collecting water and everything else. That's, that's fantastic. But what, uh, it's, it's just very clear in the zoning by, by law, and I just don't think we have the right to look at it any differently than the building laws, but that's it. Thank you.
Yeah, well, to start with.
Wanted to speak when you have a chance.
I want, I want to speak also. Jeff, the, the original reason that we started with all this is that we, uh, received, uh, uh, a request, one of the neighbors or something on fill being put into the property. And the first, and, and we sent a letter out and, uh, we got a letter back that it wasn't using that much. And then we had a second time when there was more fill being brought onto it. Uh, and I went over the first time and I went over the sec, went there the second time and observed it. And, and this all came about because of fill. And that, and, and then when we got involved with the fill, then we saw that it needed a, a, a site plan. And that's when all this stuff has, and, and that's where we're at, at this point. And I, there's no question in my mind that obviously, and this has been explained at more than one meeting, why we're in the position we are in. And as far as the, the buffers is, and, and Mr. Peralt has, has addressed this, the, the ten-foot, and I, I'd like to have him, uh, explain it again with, with the land sweeping and so forth. Mike?
Yes, um, there's, um, a fine line on, on the buffer requirements. The property to, abutting this property is zoned industrial. So therefore the buffer is ten feet. When the property abutting an industrial zone property is residentially zoned, not used, residentially zoned, then the buffer dimension increases. So the ten-foot buffer, as shown on this plan, conforms with zoning. So there's no waiver requirement of the dimension of the buffer. What the concerns that we have presented and are on the, the, the letter tonight is that, um, because of the use being residential next door, that just having a fence, in my opinion, and basically it's up to the board to decide this, is inadequate. My opinion, and basically it's up to the board to decide this, is inadequate to properly provide. A. A buffer. Not a screen, but a buffer that's landscaped to break up that view. That goes from one property to the other property. And therefore, we recommend the landscaping plan be extended down the entire property line to the street.
Thank you, Mike. Are there any other comments, Liz?
Um, Michelle Carney would like to speak.
Please.
Gonna unmute you, Michelle.
Hi, everybody. Um, would it be okay if I just did a quick scream cheer?
Sorry. Is that okay?
All right.
All right. How do I do this? Oh, I can't find it.
Down the bottom.
Okay, so if we look at, um, the town council's initial. Initial cease and desist at the, um, bottom. It says to, um, comply with one seventy-five sixty-six A. And then if you, if you look up one seventy-five sixty-six A for buffer strips. It, it says we're commercial multi-unit residential or industrial joint. Uses a joint existing residential properties, which, which is what we are. Or a residential district, the buffer strip has to be at least twenty feet wide. And I had that and I can't figure out how to share the multiple screens, but. Um, I just want to make that point because I know Mr. Peralta says. That it's not, but. We deserve the twenty feet because we're an existing. Residential property. And I just, I don't understand why. Why he doesn't believe that we deserve the full twenty feet. Um. So that, that's my only comment, really.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Actually, my comment to that, oh, because I was going to follow up and ask. Michael, we're, I can't find it in the zoning. Where, where, where is it zoning that it says you have, you can do a ten, ten-foot buffer?
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
It specifically says existing residential properties or residential districts.
I, I, I have the bylaw in front of me and if I could, uh, share the screen, I could show it to everybody.
Yeah.
One seventy-five sixty-six.
Right. Where it says, in order to protect residential land uses from potential noxious or disruptive effect. Of adjacent land uses of different character, the following buffer areas shall be provided. Where commercial multi-unit residential or industrial use to join. Existing residential properties, which is what we have here, or residential districts. Whether developed or undeveloped, adequate buffering shall be provided along all lot lines. By joining the residential properties, in addition to that required under one seventy-five twenty-nine. A buffer strip of at least twenty feet and width shall be reserved and screening shall be provided. In the form of natural growth of trees, if existing, and then it goes on. But, I mean, I read that as meaning you need a twenty-foot buffer.
May I, Mr. Chairman? Uh, Attorney Nagel stopped reading that section perhaps because it didn't fit his argument. But if we read on, it says, or a natural growth of trees and thick planting. Or a double row of evergreen trees, not less than eight feet in height. And not more than twenty feet apart in the spacing of one row centered on the spacing of the trees of the other. So the bylaw does specifically call for an alternative to that twenty-foot buffer. It's clear.
Yeah, I don't, I, I disagree with that. I think that describes what could be within that twenty-foot buffer. Not an alternative to a twenty-foot buffer. And, you know, under these circumstances where I think everybody here understands that, um, the, um. This, this is a problem for the neighbors. And it's an undersized lot. It's a undersized frontage. That, um. If, if the site board, if the planning board is to err at all, it would, should err on the side of. Interpreting these bylaws, uh, to the benefit of, uh, the, the abutters who were, uh. For whom the bylaw is designed to protect.
Any other people waiting, Liz?
Um, there is not. Oh, wait a minute, Rick Collins.
Right. I asked a couple of questions earlier that didn't get answered about the type, the number of trucks can be stored on site, hours of operation.
Mr. Sullivan.
Um, the number of trucks currently are on there, well, you shouldn't say currently because there's only a, a couple in there, they're spread out. One sitting next to the garage, one's securing the container, storage container. The number of trucks is under a dozen at the moment. Uh, I don't, I don't plan on expanding. Shrinking if anything. So I would see it, say at the maximum, there might be a dozen trucks. The hours of operation, um, I don't keep them, they're, they're winter pieces of equipment. They're not stored there in the winter time, so they're not going to be fired up in the middle of the night and driven out of there. Um, they're already staged on location. So the hours of operation, they're going to just be stored off-season. And there is no operation per se in the winter time because they're, they're elsewhere.
Any repairs taking place on site?
Minimal. I do electrical. I might change a chain here or there. Stuff of that nature. That's done, that's done off-season.
All right.
Anyone else, Liz?
Chairman, may I?
Anyone else, Liz?
Mr. Nagel would like to speak again.
Yeah.
Chairman, if I could just say that, um, according to my client, uh, Pat Kearney. The, um, there's, um, used oil filters stored on the property in a rusted-out truck bed. And that, uh. That those may have been buried on site. Uh, and he observed, uh, oil stains on soil in the area where that burial may have taken place. So. It sounds like it's not just incidental, uh, uh, repair and maintenance of these trucks, but, uh. It sounds like it may be more of a major aspect of the operation.
Can I speak to that?
No.
Um, filters in a, in a recycle bin. There, uh, I don't have it with me today, but there's an EPA specification regarding that. And it's not contamination. If they are drained or crushed. Drain for twenty-four hours or put through a machine and crushed. There can be put into the regular waste stream. If I had that piece of paper in front of me, I could give you the EPA. Uh, regulation number for it, but. There's nothing wrong with a used oil filter in a steel recycling bin. Or even in your trash that's stuck out at the front of your house that Mr. Kearney may be doing when he's out there.
Yeah, that's a residential use, not a, an industrial one. And the, and the steel bin apparently is rusted and corroded and maybe subject to leaking, who knows? But the point is, is, is if the, uh. You know, the amount of, uh, oil, used oil filters seems to indicate that. That activity of working on the trucks may be more expansive than you previously suggested.
All right, I disagree.
Chairman, Michelle Carney would like to speak again.
Hello.
Hi, um, real quick, I just forgot to mention this before, but, um, DigSafe was out at the property, um, I believe March twenty-fourth. And they told us that, um. The owner next door, Mr. Sullivan, would either be rest, repairing or installing a water line and. Last Friday, April second. Um, in the morning, he was out there with a, uh, backhoe, I believe, digging around the second driveway. Um. And then by the afternoon, he was passing it down and, and then it was gone. So. Just wanted to point that out too.
This is, this is the crux, this is the crux of what I have to live with. Um, I have. I have hawks that look over me at everything I do. I was in contact with the, um, Abington Water, Abington, um. Water District, Abington Rockland. And I had told them that I had a leaking water, um, and coming into the house inside the foundation. I got their blessing and I did it Friday morning. We shut the water off, we dug eight feet outside the foundation and we spliced in a section for eight feet. The water going back into the foundation. But yet I have to have something as innocuous as repairing a leaking water service that comes into the house, brought up at a, a hearing of this nature. I have, the reason the fence is the way it is, is because I had Mr. Kearney on his back pool deck, drinking his coffee, just standing watching us. They'd be outside their door on either side of their screen door, his wife on one side, himself on the other side. Whether it be a morning coffee or kickback, having a cigarette or smoking marijuana, drinking a Bud Light. I'm not going to live in my yard or, or at my house and have my neighbor watching me constantly. So the step in the fence is there for a purpose. So he can't be standing on his pool and be watching me in my yard or watching whoever. It's just, I'm just not going to live that way.
Any other comments? Well. Yes, Mr. Whitney.
Hold on.
Thank you, just to speak briefly, and I want to thank the board for all the time that you've devoted to this, but. You know, we, we've been through the process and we've come back before you tonight. With what we thought was a plan that was adequately addressed all of the concerns from your consulting engineer. And, uh, that complies with the zoning. And we've been confronted with, you know, the stormwater, well, the stormwater isn't correct. Well, two engineers are telling us that it is. Confronted with a grandfather, is this like grandfather, isn't grandfather. We're confronted with, well, will the applicant comply with these things that, uh, might be decreed tonight as part of conditions to a plan? And, you know, and confronted without the, the buffers correct or incorrect. And, and some of those questions are going to be answered along the way after this board is done with the deliberations on this project. The buffers, if the buffers are not in compliance with zoning, I'm sure that the zoning board, the zoning enforcement officer are going to have a problem with it. The zoning frontage, which again, I would say ninety-nine point five percent, I would say confidently. That, that frontage on that lot is a pre-existing grandfathered lot. And it's going to comply because it has complied for all these years. And it's, the frontage and the grandfather status of a lot is not dependent upon the use of the lot. It's dependent upon the configuration of the lot as it was constructed, as it was set out on a plan that's recorded at the registry. It's been accepted by this planning board, planning boards that, uh, uh, preceded, uh, in the town of Abington. And then, yeah, there, there has been some difficulty, but, you know, we all would, would hope that, um. Through the process of life, there is some redemption and Mr. Sullivan acknowledges his missteps, his miscues early on. But does that mean that we continually, um, deny him the right to use his property? Like every one of us would want the right to use our property in conformity with the zoning bylaws and with the, um. Existing statutes and, and uses that are allowed in that district. I, I would suggest that we would all want the opportunity to use our property if it's an allowed use and this isn't allowed use. It's unfortunate. That these folks, the Kearneys now and the people on Oak Street. Have, uh, uh, continued complaints, but, you know, one of the reasons they have the continued complaints, and I can remember. Sitting on your Board of Selectment in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five, um, in, in, in. Hearing complaints about the Oak Street neighbors who had difficulty with the commercial uses down on Plymouth Street. It is a fact of life if you're going to buy a house. Next to an industrial property that you're probably going to have some difficulty. You probably pay less for your house because of that. And you take that calculated risk. It's just like buying next to a supermarket or Stop and Shop or. Any other uses, railroads and trains and things like that. There's certain characteristics that come with your property when you buy them and you. If you, you can seek to mitigate them as much as possible. And we're trying to mitigate as much as possible and to comply with everything that the board asked us to do. And just move forward and, and as I say, employ his property. He wants to be a part of the town of Abington. He wants to employ people. He wants to pay taxes. Here he is, he's, he's got his arms open, he'd like to come in and do business in town. And I just respectfully ask the board, thank you first. For all of the time that you spent delivering, but also lastly, um, to, to ask you. Uh, that this man be allowed to go forward with this plan, which again is a small-scale operation. It's twenty-four thousand square foot. That's half an acre of land. Um, it's, it's, it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitney. There, I have a couple other questions. Uh, one, one of the things that I, I think. As, as I look at it right now, is that we need to continue this hearing from May third. We need to talk with the, the, the zoning enforcement officer. And we need to talk to town council on a couple of things. Uh, I know Mr. Nagel wanted to speak, uh. And also I know Bruce wants to speak, uh. Mr. Nagel, if there's anything you wanted to add that was no.
Yes, Chairman, thank you very briefly, and I appreciate the time that the board has spent tonight on this matter. Uh, but I have to respond to Attorney Whitney. Uh, you know, it's not a calculated, uh, you know, risk. To move into a, a property that is, uh, a, uh, pre-existing, uh, residence. Pre-existing, not conforming residence. Uh, to anticipate that you have a neighbor, uh, that's going to, uh, rev up. That is, was a residential at the time, is going to start an industrial use. At, at the same time is continuing a residential use. And in blatant violation of the, of the town's bylaws. And, uh, ignoring four stop work orders that are still pending. And, uh, and, you know, and then his attorney comes to here and says, well, you know, that's tough luck for the, for the abutting neighbor. Uh, to put up with this stuff. When, as we've laid out, uh, pretty clearly tonight, there are a lot of problems with this. With this, uh, proposed project. And, um. The track record, and we're told by Attorney Whitney, uh, that we should be assured that all these issues will be corrected. After the site plan is approved. While those assurances are belied by his client's track record, which is abominable. So, uh, I would encourage the board, uh, if it's not to deny the project outright. Uh, to continue this and as suggested, to, uh, talk to town council and to the zoning enforcement officer. And get a determination on whether or not this project, it could be approved at all. Uh, and if so, what needs to be done, uh, prior to, uh, this board reconvening on this. With regard to ongoing non-compliance. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nagel. We, we've done all those, we've been at all the other meetings, you realize. Coming a lot of that, we've got some new things coming tonight, but Bruce, you had some questions.
This is just directed to Mr. Hardy. What has it been like, four stop work orders? Why did you ignore them?
Uh, Mr. Hardy didn't ignore them. Uh, so, uh, he, he, he has been working on this and so I, I, I think that's. I think, I think the problems that we've had, uh, started originally with the owner and we can try and to address them right along and. I guess at this point, we need to come to. And I guess at this point, we need to come to some kind of kind of conclusion. And my suggestion would be to continue this hearing until May 3 and and speak with town council and speak with the zoning enforcement officer and see if we need to add anything to this or deny it or approve it or whatever has to happen. And I'm certainly open to your board members to advise me on that.
And I hope we get.
Is this specifically what you guys want me to ask town council and the building commissioner? So you you want, are you questioning the 20-foot buffer? Did we want clarification?
Question in it. We'll come along with things that if I can go over that, we'll be involved.
Okay.
I definitely think we needed an answer on the grandfa. I'm reading through case law right now, and it's, I don't know, it's not not all that gray. But I'd like to have a distinguish as if this was truly a grandfather's lot now that it's changed use.
Yeah, you know, it's like when we did Zero Summer Street. I'd like to have the town council and the building inspector at the next meeting. I mean, we may have three lawyers, but I'd like to have, I'd like to have, I mean, we had them at Zero Summer Street. I think we need to have them for this one.
What's your pleasure, board member?
Well, we should continue this. Yeah, definitely.
Motion is to continue this hearing until May 3.
Motion made.
I'll second it.
Motion made. Second. Further discussion. Any further discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Some more. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you and good night.
See you, Mike.
Night, Michael.
Discussion of stormwater management rules and rights, Liz.
All right. So as you probably remember, last fall, the town adopted the stormwater management bylaws to comply with the MS4 permit. So the bylaw passed, the AG just got back to us, said it's good to go, but we need some rules and regulations to go along with the bylaw so people know how to apply for a permit. So basically, this is to it's a disturbance of acre or more of land. Let me grab my copy so I can read to you exactly what sort of some of the the problems are right now. Sorry, I was going over it in the other room. So there's a question right now that the stormwater permitting authority is made up. Of they're appointed by the Board of Selectmen, but it's somebody from the planning board, somebody from conservation, the director of health, the building commissioner, and the DPW director. What they're kind of looking at is to try to streamline that and actually have the Board of Selectmen appoint this SWPA. But then they have the SWPA who would have the authority to appoint the planning board as the permit granting authority for the stormwater management permits. I don't know if you guys want to take that on or not. But it almost makes sense if you're doing a subdivision plan or a site plan, because those are going to be the plans that would be disturbing an acre or more of land, right?
Yeah.
Building a single family home, maybe not so much, depending on where it was. So that was sort of the general thought. We had a meeting about a week ago with the consulting engineer about the by about the rules and regulations. And I sent you guys copies with their comments and town council's comments. So this has gone back and forth a couple of times now, and we will have another meeting. So I wanted to get your comments together and bring them back to that meeting. And then I'll invite you guys to alter that meeting if you want to come. Oh.
Is that much a stretch of what we do already? I mean, Michael, I mean, the PMP and they always they always address stormwater management.
Right, but this is different because if you're disturbing acre of land, it opens up a whole new can of worms under the MS4 permit. Like this thing is there. It's very involved. Like, we're asking for a new street cleaner because we got to keep the silt and the dirt out of the detention basins and out of the water. So like, there's a lot of stuff going on for the poor DPW trying to get the detention basins cleaned up and which hence the stormwater, the revolving fund. But anyways, I sent you the rules and regulations. They want to change where it says SWPA to the planning board. So I don't know. It really isn't. It would be a separate application. And it would be a separate charge, and they would have to look at separate things that are contained in the bylaw to make sure that the plans were compliant with the permit with the stormwater permit.
Liz, this is a new thing. So I, you know, we might ask, have we consulted with other planning boards? If they've taken on this responsibility, what's the learning curve or is this brand new?
No, no, because this is all, we just did the bylaw last year.
So this is brand new for us.
This is all being driven by the federal government and the state government in conjunction for this MS4 permit. Also, we're all doing it at the same time. I guess is what I'm trying to say.
The point is that you've got to have some education, you know, I mean, we've, you know, we'll approve the bylaws and stuff like that. But, you know, I agree that the planning board should probably take on the responsibility for a subdivision if it, you know, disturbs more than an acre of land. I get that. But I think we're going to need to get some education, you know, on this to know what we're doing.
I agree with that, but I and I think part of the big the big thing that the group that we're trying to, you know, hash these out is who's issuing the permit? Is it going to be this five-member group? There's a school of thought that this five-member group gets together once or twice a month and and they issue the permit. There's another school of thought that Bruce Hughes is applying for a subdivision. And so he's going to have to go through that board. He's going to go through Congress, and he's going to have to the zoning, and he's going to have to go to planning. And that we can sort of streamline the procedure if the planning board is the permit granting authority for the stormwater permit.
Well, yeah, no, I mean, I'd be in favor of streamlining it.
Right. So but so the and the part of that that would help streamline it is our engineers are already looking at the stormwater. They would just have to take this bylaw and make sure that everything that was supposed to be in the permit application was there and it was okay, like that the calculations were. So I understand your your education concerns. The only thing I can say to that is is Google it and look at the MS4 permit and see what they're trying to achieve.
Well, you know, again, I've been monitoring this and NAST planners, Lister. I think the biggest thing, you know, what you just said is that this would be under the purview of the consulting engineers to make sure that these regulations are adhered to if we're the permitting granting authority.
Right, right. Oh, yeah. No, no, it wouldn't. It wouldn't be you guys without guidance.
Yeah. So that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
This point has been made, then, yeah, definitely. I'm okay with that. And I think this board should be the permit granting authority rather than have people go through several boards. You know.
You guys are comfortable with an engineer providing a report and you ask some questions. You know what I mean? You're comfortable in that situation with using no other board uses a consulting engineer, right? So that the system's already in place for you guys to do this.
As much as I don't, I'm not looking for more to do, I think we're probably the best board for that service in the town and also for the people that come before us. It is always difficult when someone wants to put something into town and has to go before three or four boards.
Right.
You see, Mr. Chair, the reason I asked Liz for the explanation is people watching this out in TV land. You know, they really need to have an explanation of how we would come to an agreement on this. And what Liz just said is a good explanation of why we should pursue this.
Any other comments?
It really is. Do you have you guys had a chance to read the the bylaw and all the crossouts and different?
There's a lot of stuff crossed out.
A lot of stuff, yeah. I don't know if anybody has any comments or concerns, you know, if they're looking to have anything changed. Because I can certainly take those back to that consortium.
Well, Liz, you know, can I ask something? It's a hell, it's a heck of a job reading this stuff with all this crossed out. I wonder, I'm not asking you, because I know you did an awful lot of work on this and really appreciate it.
I didn't do the crossouts, my friend.
But it would be nice to see a copy without the.
Clean copy, right? Well, I think you got it in all its glory, so you could know where it's from. So if you questioned, well, why does it say this? You can say, well, this guy from Culpin reviewed it or this guy, the consulting engineer reviewed it. And there, did you get their notes on the side?
Yeah.
Yeah, because so it got very convoluted because the engineers wrote it and drafted it, and they borrowed it from another town. And as as happens, never. And then it went to town council. They sent it back with their feedback, and now the group is looking at it again. And I I didn't not specifically invite you to the last meeting, but I thought maybe if we just had like this hash around and got to a point where we got it minimized to, all right, these are our questions.
Well, I just got a brand new pair of glasses today, so.
You really put them to the test.
Help me from the work, reading this.
All right, we'll leave it at that then.
All right. So nobody has any thoughts they want me to bring back, and I'll invite you to the next meeting. But, um.
Please, you know, because we can look at this stuff and, you know, if we have questions before then, you know, we can bring to the meeting. That would be really good.
Yeah.
Long term, Bruce, if you see any training that anyone's doing on this, I'd be interested to know whether it's MMA, citizens planning.
Old Colony, anybody.
Because this is a big lift to really get our hands around as to what the new expectations are.
Yeah.
You know, even if my new employer, Monticuce, is offering this course, I'll let you know.
You guys still have the bylaw from last fall? It would have been in your warrants? Because that's a pretty decent overall picture. What they're trying, but it is a lot of information and a lot of, I mean, I mean, to break it down to the simplest fact of well, if they're disturbing over an acre of land, they got to come see you, right?
Well, you know, I could compare this to is Jeff, I think you were on the sign or Rick, you were on the sign by law. There's a whole lot of work that went into that.
All right. Letter in support of the shared town plan, Rick?
Apparently, the town manager and the Board of Selectmen have asked Allison Sullivan to make a budget request of $200,000 to help support a regional planning office for Abington, Rockland, and Whitman. And I guess Representative Sullivan is actually meeting tomorrow with the House Ways and Means Chairman to go over her budget requests. So this is basically just a letter saying we would support this. It's probably not going to pass, but just in case, you know, everything, the stars align wonderfully. A letter saying that, yes, the the Abington Board of Planning Board supports this for the following reasons. And it gets into some of the shared issues and infrastructure that we have with the other towns and go from there.
Oh, we definitely need a town planner. And, you know, since the towns we're talking about are close by. And, you know, probably the odds of us getting a town planner, I think we've been told because it's a $600,000 shortfall in the town budget. So, I mean, would I like to have a town planner for the town of Abington? Yes. If we could get $200,000 in state money to support a person for three towns, hell, yeah, we should support it.
It does sound like. Go ahead, Wayne.
Stepping on you if you have what you want to say.
Oh, no, go ahead, go ahead, Wayne. You can finish your thought.
We have a letter. If that letter is okay, then if you would like that submitted to Allison, that's fine.
Do we have to make a motion on this, Mr. Chair?
We'll do anyhow.
I'll motion, make a motion.
I'll second it.
We clear the discussion? All those in favor, send them a letter, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have anything else to cover, Liz?
Don't believe me, do you? I just wanted to, you know, real quick. So the marijuana delivery thing, we're going to do at the May meeting, fingers crossed, God willing, get that done. And then there was a rumor that somebody else was going to do a petition article for a zoning change. I have not seen Hyder hear of that. I'm not quite sure when the warrant closes. It's pretty soon.
12.
The 12. So if it comes in, that'll get thrown in to the pot. If not, we're just doing the marijuana in May.
Let's just hope they, someone doesn't want to use drones for delivery of the marijuana. That would be a whole different.
That's what I was going to do, Bruce.
Stand out back with a big magnet and pull it in.
With a box of Girl Scout cookies.
I thought I saw, I thought the Girl Scouts would be the first ones diving into this whole this whole business deal. The I saw some place that we have a meeting April, next Monday?
Next Monday.
For zoning.
For the zoning, the proposed zoning changes?
All the zoning.
You guys, right?
Bring them up again at town meeting. And hopefully after three years, instead of spending $1,000 or more each year, we will get approval of voting on them this time.
Well, we crossed, we we dotted all our i's and crossed all our t's. Everything's been advertised. We can go right ahead with this next Monday night.
Oh, yeah.
The problem with it is if we go before town meeting and they, I will put up a stronger defense perhaps this time because it was okay. We couldn't vote on any of our zoning bylaws, but we could vote on marijuana, even though we only had 85 people there. So I would suggest that if people are for or against this, that you should vote on it that night.
Hopefully, we'll have more people at a town meeting because more people have had the COVID shots. So it's an incentive to go to town.
Anything else and we have a motion for adjournment, you know? We can get out at this time instead of 11:15, like the last.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
No discussion on that. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Letter to Allison.
Yep, I can do that.